We call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Sheila, can you do the roll call?
Mr. Furman, he gave prior notice he would not be able to attend. Dr. Giles, Pastor Jones.
President.
Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Dr. Hans, she noted maybe on the... Ms. Newman. Ms. Root. Ms. May gave prior notice. Mr. Torres. Mr. Cowan.
President.
And Dr. Guadalupe, new board member, is also en route.
I'm here too.
And Mr. Young.
Here. Okay, our first opportunity for public comment, anybody online?
If you are online and wish to speak for public comments, please raise your hand at this time.
We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Anybody in the room for public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Got a tie, alright. Just by voice vote, right? All in favor by aye, aye? Any opposed? Item two is a CMHA update. Alan, I think you're online, can you...
I...
Walk us through it?
Yeah, I am online, if you can hear me, okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay. Well, as far as updates, I'll kind of give you a little bit of rundown of what we're working on, and then open it up to the group as far as specific questions. But, you know, I think the biggest thing that we have going on right now would have to do with the current Medicaid revenue gap that all of our members are facing across the state, including OCHN. As you are probably well aware, the 10 PIHPs have roughly a $93 million FY24 Medicaid shortfall right now, or deficit. And, you know, kind of the frustrating part of this is we are not in our advocacy efforts that we have been, you know, ramping up over the last several weeks and months. We're not asking for additional revenue from the state. The $93 million shortfall represents... That falls within the current appropriations line item that was approved by the legislature and the governor last, you know, last July-ish, you know, June-July last year, for the current fiscal year budget that we're in. You know, as you're probably very well aware, you know, the budget, the new FY25 budget begins here in a couple of short weeks. At the end of this month, September 30th, the new one begins, obviously, on October 1. You know, we have really been ramping up our efforts, asking the department to relook at the Medicaid rates. This is, you know, this is certainly tied to the, you know, I kind of call the phenomenon of, you know, the, you know, rebasing, you know, the Medicaid redetermination process coming out of the public health emergency where redeterminations were froze for a number of years, where we had record Medicaid caseloads of above 3 million people for the first time ever. Prior to COVID, we had probably 2.2 to 2.4 million people on Medicaid in Michigan. So, you know, going through this redetermination process, we know that, you know, roughly 700,000 people have lost Medicaid coverage. And frankly, during that redetermination process, a lot of people are getting, as they get put back on Medicaid, frankly, they're put in the wrong Medicaid bucket, which is something that we saw, you know, several years ago when the state adopted Medicaid expansion in Michigan. People were moving from disabled, Asian, blind over to the Medicaid expansion bucket, which has, you know, significant financial ramifications. We're seeing that again this year. So, you know, that is really top of mind of what we are working on in Lansing. The tough part about it is, you know, from an advocacy standpoint, mechanically, there's really nothing that the legislature can do or has a role in this. You know, as we talk to legislators, we're simply asking them to put pressure on the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to essentially send out the money that they approved and appropriated last year. I mean, that's kind of the predicament that we're in. Again, you know, we're not asking for additional resources, more resources beyond what was appropriated. We're asking for the department to, you know, look at the rates, redo the rates, and adjust them to, you know, send out the necessary money to, you know, fix the structural deficits that are being experienced by all 10 PIHPs across the state. Even if they adjusted the rates, sent out the $93 million that was needed, I believe they are still, they being the state, $75, $80 million still under the appropriations line item. So, it, you know, there is money out there. It's just something that we have to continue to urge them to do. Bob Sheehan and myself have pushed on the department. You know, we have reached out to the lower-level staff. We've elevated it now to, you know, Deputy Director Kinesik, Medicaid Director Megan Groen. We've, through our lobbyists, have asked for a meeting with Director Hertel on this. We've asked for a meeting with the State Budget Office Director Jen Flood. Something to push the department to have a sense of urgency here and get the funds kicked out. One of my concerns, as we kind of look at what the legislative landscape is going to look like in Lansing here in the near future, the legislature will be back this week. They're going to be in on Wednesday, essentially, the two 9/11 memorial resolutions, kind of a, you know, it's a ceremonial type of a day. They're not going to really have any votes. What we're hearing, you know, they may have one day, two day of votes in September, and that's it. And then essentially, that's all the legislative activity that's going to take place until, essentially, after the election in November. However, you know, one of the things that we keep hearing a steady drumbeat about would, you know, would come from school groups really displeased with the budget that was passed back in, you know, late June, early July, looking for additional money for per pupil foundation, for the school safety and mental health grants that were reduced during the budget process. The governor also has a priority of her, the SOAR funds, which are her economic development pot of money that she wants. So, my point being is that the legislature, the governor, will be looking for unspent pots of money that are laying around that they can repurpose for some of their priorities. And, again, you know, our urgency is, well, hold on, this money is not an unspent pot, you know. There is a need for these funds. Let's get this kicked out and pushed out to the system before it gets gobbled up, you know, by other interested parties, before the state closes out the fiscal year that, you know, would only, you know, compound this problem moving into FY25. So, I mean, really, top of mind, I mean, that's kind of the big driving issue that we have going on right now. Do you want me to take... Are there any specific questions on that? I mean, that I can kind of jump into a couple of other things that we're working on, but just wanted to see if there's any questions, because I know that's a very sensitive topic.
Yep, I think we've got a question for you.
Yep.
Hi, Alan, thank you for attending this evening. And I'm the chair, and been working very hard with our finance chair. I hope the state understands that what we're going to be looking at, if we don't get some relief, is when we get into '25, there is going to come a point when we're going to run out of Medicaid money.
Yes.
I mean, it's just going to happen. We have exhausted, and we've publicized this, this is not a surprise to anyone. We, our reserves are exhausted. We've done that to help the system, to help our providers. But the reality is that if there isn't relief, a realistic relief, this year and then into next year, we are going to come to a point where we're going to have to tell our providers, at some point, we're not going to be able to pay you through the end of September 30, 2025, because we don't have the money, and we are not going to spend money we don't have. We can't, we can't go into a deficit, you know, net deficit in our funding. And so, it's very frustrating, especially when we find out one of the rule changes they want to make is to not allow us to increase our reserves, which got exhausted during COVID, because even with the extra money, the service demand skyrocketed. So, I, if you need anybody to go up and talk, we'll be glad to come with you the practical reality that this is going to have. And it's already being felt out there, because I think some providers didn't maybe see what was coming that we've seen, despite the fact we've said it. And they're going through a transition phase right now. And then it's going to continue. And so, you know, we appreciate your efforts, number one, I want to say thank you. But if you need any help, if you need anything, you need any help with Oakland County legislators, please let us know. We will be more than glad to help.
Yep, nope, but certainly appreciate that. And I think one of the things that you're going to see coming out of our office tomorrow, I'm going to put together an action alert, you know, kind of our email action alert system, that, I mean, essentially, it's going to be going out to all legislators and kind of starting to raise the flag that, hey, this is an issue. We need you to put pressure on the department to send out these funds, because if you don't, this is, you know, what you just described is exactly what's going to happen, not only in Oakland County, but across the state. And I don't, you know, you are not unique in Oakland County. I just had on Friday an interview with a reporter from the Traverse City area. Same thing up there, I mean, it is, it is all over the state. And then, yeah, as you're, you know, correct, you know, you add this issue on top of the reserve issue, yeah, it just, it further compounds the problem. You know, I think we have been more than fair, more than patient with the department of trying to come up with some kind of a reasonable solution to this. And frankly, they have been dragging their feet on this. And, you know, now we're going to have to start to ramp up our advocacy efforts and see if we can, you know, shake anything loose. The problem is, you know, the legislature has not done a good job over the last couple of years in holding the administration's feet to the fire. You know, they've essentially had allowed the governor's office, the department, to kind of roll over them as far as priorities. And, you know, asking them to, you know, hey, you know, hey, you know, really hold the department accountable is not something that they've, they've done a great job of so far. So, you know, hopefully, we continue to rattle enough cages on this to get some attention and we finally get some action on this.
If I could just add, you know, the, you know, unfortunately, this is a crisis that can be avoided. If it becomes a crisis, and I mean, I think Oakland, you know, we're lucky, we're a little larger, we have a little bit more resources. But I know, and, but Oakland, like the other organizations, we're not, we're not poorly-run organizations. We run at a very basic administrative level, probably more so than many nonprofits do, with five to, you know, six to seven percent overhead. And so, I mean, you could have, I'm sure, up in Traverse City and maybe in some of the outstate areas, some real compromises there. And this would be very unfortunate, because again, this is a crisis that can be avoided. But unfortunately, too often, we find that people wait until it's a crisis and beyond, and then lives are impacted. That's the thing here. Lives of these, the individuals we serve and their families are going to be impacted very adversely. We're already here hearing about that. So, again, I applaud the efforts, and I guess we're going to have to really get hard about it and loud.
Yep, yeah, and you know, when I talked to the reporter on Friday, I mean, I stressed the point that this is not a mismanagement issue from our members. I mean, this is, as you said, an avoidable situation. But, you know, the department has chosen to continue to go down this path and essentially take a laissez-faire approach to the, you know, the concerns that we've raised on this. But, I mean, this is 100% avoidable. They have the money there. You know, we're not asking for additional resources. And, yeah, I mean, this is something that could be very easily fixed in a very short, in a short fashion. And for whatever reason, it has not been a priority.
Yep, I have one more question from Pastor Jones. Go ahead, Pastor Jones.
And let me just echo our chair. I noticed that you have in the plan that we do need to do something on advocacy, and you've talked about groups coming together. What I'd be interested in, because of the emergency of this issue, how quickly you want to put together a group to go. You know, every, every month, we hear persons talking about what they're not getting, the cost of things. And so, you know, it's a little difficult for us to sit and listen, nod, give that New York nod, and not be able to respond back with adequate information or help for them. So, what I would be asking you, and it's in your notes, that you want to create an advocacy group to go up, that let's get that going. And I think maybe it'll take some other people there to show the need. I'm sure they understand, but you know, you know what makes a diamond? A little heat and pressure.
Yeah, exactly right. And Bob Sheehan and myself have a call set up on Wednesday with the heads of the, all the advocacy groups in the state. So, Mary Ann Huff from the Mental Health Association, Sherry Boyd from R., Kevin Fisher, Carla Pareto from ACMH. So, we are meeting with them on Wednesday and essentially asking them to join us and support us in this effort to put pressure on the department. We're also going to meet with some of our other partners, like Encompass Michigan, Mala, MAC, which is the Michigan Association of Counties, to join us as well in putting, putting the pressure on the state to do this. So, that call, that action should be coming here relatively shortly. So, one of the other, you know, one of the other items I wanted to mention is related on the dollar side of things with money and funding. I mentioned that it's a priority of the legislature are the, the school safety and mental health grants, so school funding. You know, over the last couple of years, the governor has put in $300, $400 million that have gone to school-based mental health services, essentially giving the funding over to the school districts. Well, we have seen in a lot of cases, you know, some of that money has been used for workforce. Well, they have ultimately, you know, ended up in a lot of parts of the state, use those dollars to hire works, workforce away from our public mental health system. In the last budget that was passed in late June, early July, the legislature and the governor reduced those school safety and mental health grants from like $400 million in the FY24 budget, down to about $100 million in the FY25 budget. So, you know, school groups are up in arms, they're going to have to lay off staff, that they have some significant concerns. We are putting together through our PR firm, an op-ed, and this has been kind of a source of sensitivity to us where, you know, we certainly want to see school-based, you know, mental health services be available to kids. But we have argued, instead of just giving the money over to the schools, let's work in a collaborative fashion where, you know, schools can partner with our community-based organizations to provide some of those services, so we don't have the dollar silo, so we're not picking winners and losers. So, we're going to put together an op-ed that's essentially going to say, you know, legislature, I know this is an important issue to you. Maybe this gives us an opportunity to rethink, reframe this issue. Instead of simply giving a pile of money over to schools to do this, let's work in a collaborative fashion where schools can work with our members, work with providers, to provide some of this service, fill in some of the gaps, and work together on that. You know, we will see where this goes. I mean, this is an issue that gets very political. You know, we had the, again, the unfortunate, and I mean, your community is certainly, you know, aware of this. You know, they had the unfortunate shooting that happened again in Georgia a couple of weeks ago. So now you have legislators pointing to this and saying, you'll see, we need to fund this in this fashion. So, they're using this for political purposes. And again, I think, you know, what we'd like to make the point would be, like, you know, what happened in Oakland County, where, you know, OCHN, your member, you know, your providers, you know, really came together and served the community as a whole. I think that's, should be a model that we look at moving forward, where, you know, if we come together, we can, you know, provide these services in a much more comprehensive fashion than just simply siloing the dollars and the resources. So, that's something else that we're going to be working on here in the very near future.
Alan, the group, our group, it's been working on what we call solidarity. A couple of, well, now, it's, I guess, a couple of years back, with all of those dollars that went to the schools, Oakland Intermediate School District was a part of that solidarity group. And one of the things they had is, we're swimming in money, but we didn't know what to do with it. And, you know, I'm sure we'll address it in our solidarity meeting that's coming up the end of October. But I agree with you, we need to address it so that the dollars are coming back. And this group, OCHN, is probably better to handle some of the disbursement of those dollars, whether you're working with Honors Health and all of those others. So, it is on our radar and the solidarity group, and it will be covered at our meeting. But whatever we can do, and I can't speak for all of them, but whatever we can do, I would like to engage in a conversation and a support to make sure that OCHN gets its proper share to help address the mental health issues that's happening based on the school shootings and violence and what have you. Thank you.
Yep, no, I, yeah, no, I mean, what you folks do there, I think, is certainly a very good model for the rest of the state, that's for sure. You know, I guess as far as a couple of other items, you know, I sent over in your packet, you know, a report on what was in the budget that's going to start here on October 1. I mean, you got kind of a lot of information in there. You know, really, if you kind of look at it as a whole, the last two fiscal years, there's been more money spent in the Michigan budget than ever before. I mean, this budget that is going to start here in another couple of weeks is like $82.5 billion. The previous budget was $87 billion. You know, prior to COVID, I mean, the state budget was probably in like the upper 60s, $60 billion range, you know. So, there's just been a lot of money that's been coming from Washington DC and other places. But if you look at the overall spending on mental health services, really outside of CCBHC, the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics, there's been very little investment in the, you know, public mental health system in this record time of spending. When we look at budgets moving forward, you know, really don't see a continued growth in state budgets. You know, most likely, they'll be, you know, relatively flat, maybe modest income. But it's not, they're not going to have this, these record pots of money sitting around to spend on. So, just kind of as an awareness point, just something that, you know, we've been, you know, again, outside of CCBHC, relatively disappointed with the budgets that have come out the last couple of years. As you probably noted, in the budget that's going to start here on October 1, again, there was a very modest increase for direct care workers, 20 cents. You know, we have been pushing for that, to push direct care workers up, you know, to a reasonable starting wage, where we had $2.35, two years ago, we had 85 cents that was in the budget last year. This year, it was kind of, very surprisingly, they end up throwing in 20 cents at the end of the, at the very end of the budget process, where the governor didn't call for an increase, the House budget didn't have an increase, the Senate budget didn't have an increase. I think it was a, really a matter of, okay, we have some extra money, what do we want to do with it? And they kind of dumped it in there. But, you know, again, you know, 20 cents does not go very far at all when you consider the need out there. One of the other items that was not included as far as funding in the budget, but the state is going to continue to move forward, is a Medicaid jail corrections exclusion 1115 waiver, essentially allowing individuals that are in the corrections facilities, in local county jails, in kids' residential settings, places where Medicaid has not been allowed previously, the state is going to apply for a, an 1115 waiver that would allow Medicaid to be used in those settings 90 days prior to being released. You know, 11 states already have these waivers, another 13 are in the process. So, Michigan would join that list. From what I was told, it sounds like the state was, is, you know, they're still going through the process of filing for this waiver. It's going to take six months to up to a year and a half or so. They are targeting that this would begin sometime in 2027, that they would start, though, with the state prisons and the kids' residential settings first, and then go to the local county jails after that. But again, this is something that we've worked very closely with MAC, with the Sheriff's Association. There is a significant need at the local level for the local county jail piece that, you know, this go through. So, you know, hopefully, that's something where they speed up the timeframe a little bit on this, but that's hanging out there as well. So, you know, happy to take any other questions, but those are just kind of a couple of other tidbits of things that are going on. Like I said, on the legislative front, I mean, we're not going to see any kind of action on anything until essentially lame duck. It's going to be after the election in November. And again, I think lame duck is largely going to be determined by what happens during the election on November 5. I believe that's, it's either November 5 or November 6. But the, you know, if Democrats hold on to the House of Representatives here in Michigan, I think lame duck will be relatively tame. If Republicans flip the Michigan House of Representatives, I think lame duck could be, you know, you know, very wild as far as activity and things like that. And again, Michigan has 110 House members, Democrats have a 56 to 54 majority. So, they have the bare minimum majority. So, you know, we will see what November brings and largely in those down... Yep.
Yeah, I'm, is there anything else on the mental health side? Because we have to get to the budget tonight, so...
No, no, that was just, I was just wrapping up. I mean, that was really all that I had as far as updates, unless folks have any other questions.
Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you, it was a very thorough report. We appreciate your time and energy.
No problem, thank you.
Alright. Okay, we've got a packed agenda. So, on to the Finance Committee. Sarah, welcome to the Finance Committee, since you're taking Jonathan's place. You did policy last time, right? You get to be the full spectrum. Item three, financial update. Patrick, Eddie, all of the above?
Patrick is going to join in remotely, he's under the weather.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Finance, one is the, one report is the financials, which will be provided by Eddie Brown. And then we're going to do the budget. I'll be providing deals for, and then the FY25 budget, in that order. So, we're going to go proceed with our financials. And I'm glad that Alan gave kind of like a prelude... proceed with our financials, and I'm glad that Alan gave kind of like a prelude to some of the funding, um, challenges that we're facing, and it helps to shed light on these reports that we're presenting. Uh, with that being said, Eddie, I'll be starting with the, uh, financial update.
Okay.
Thanks, Patrick. Good evening, Board. Um, so I have before you our July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four financials, um, from October 1st through two thousand and twenty-three. The first page is our payment or revenue, uh, capitation payment. Um, as we know, we've been trending down throughout the year. I believe in expectation and from communication from MDHHS, it was stated that our June would mirror or similar our, uh, payment for the remainder of the year for, uh, through July and September, July, August and September. But as you see before you, we're actually still trending down a little bit, and we're probably going to continue that trend throughout the year. Um, and I think it alludes to, uh, what, uh, I believe his name was Alan from CMH was speaking to, the money is not coming, you know, to us as expected. And so, as of July, we were slightly down, close not, not quite a million, but close to a million dollars than where we was for, uh, June. Um, with that, you know, being biggest in our dab and tentative population, so. Next page. This shows our eligibles, and so is expected as, you know, redetermination and, uh, is being worked out. We are, you know, continue to see those eligible, uh, totals drop, but, um, we were, you know, hopeful that despite them dropping, uh, the state would have made us hold to keep our revenue steady not past June and, you know, despite the decline in the eligibles. And so, for, uh, July, we're seeing eligibles down approximately, uh, I believe eight, eight thousand, uh, in, in total.
The other thing that you don't see on this report is that the number of people who are actually on Medicaid spend down now. And so, we are looking at how that's being reported and how that's impacting our funding as well, because that is a group who is not eligible for Medicaid until they meet a certain, um, cost requirement.
That's correct, Dana. Thank you. Next slide, our assets in comparison for, uh, the year. Um, we see our cash and investment in comparison to, uh, last year, September thirtieth, down approximately sixteen point one million. Um, our receivables up a little bit, approximately four million. Um, and pretty much everything else is pretty consistent with, um, our other assets, which is typically our prepay, uh, type, um, agreements, and then our capital assets, which is our standard annual depreciation. So that number will continue to decrease over the year. And so, when we get into the other slides, despite us seeing, you know, the sixteen million in cash and investments going down, what would be bad to see that go down and not see your payables decrease as well. So we'll, we'll see some of that as we get into the other slides. Next slide. So our liabilities, um, broken out by the various categories. As stated, our vendor payables, um, is down roughly approximately, uh, I believe, six, um, six million in comparison to what, where we were in September thirtieth. Um, our due to state is down just a little bit shy of maybe six hundred thousand. And employee payables, which is typically our, uh, accrual for PTO and salary accrues and things of that sort. And the last being our long-term debt, which is our bonds, which is down roughly a million, which is the payment of the principal on those two bonds for our RCC building, uh, Resources and Crisis Center in our group homes. Next slide. Our total, uh, assets and total liabilities showing, so, uh, as of July thirty-first, we're seeing approximately a hundred and thirteen point nine, uh, million in total assets, less our total liabilities approximately sixty-nine point seven million, giving us a net position roughly of forty-four point two million. So down approximately five point nine million, I believe, in our net position from where we were, uh, at the end of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide. Our revenue comparison, and so, and co- and this is comparing from July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three to July thirty-first of, uh, right now of two thousand and twenty-four. And so, the biggest thing that stands out on the page is the Medicaid. Our revenue is up quite significantly, approximately twenty-one million, um, in total. Um, state in general fund down approximately, uh, two million, and our county funds is pretty steady, as well as our all other funds, which are our grants and other rental and other, uh, miscellaneous revenue dollars. And so, um, I do want to talk about that when we get to our next page, um, but just keep that number in mind. Our revenue is up twenty-one million in comparison to last year. Next slide. So this is our expenses in comparison to the same timeframe. Um, the biggest thing that stands out quite naturally is our provider network, which is the, uh, the network of the people we serve. And, um, so that total in comparison to last year is up approximately twenty-one million. So all the additional revenue that we saw come in, we, we, we pushed it out in the network. Um, our admin is up, you know, approximately, I believe, one point seven million. Uh, but even with that increase, um, I think it was alluded or spoken about that, uh, OCHN still to main, still maintains a minus, uh, admin rate of approximately six percent. Um, so despite the increase, um, for, from last year to this year. And then the other things are our grants and all other, uh, type of expenses. Next slide. And then lastly, it's just, uh, total revenue, total expenses. So our grand total revenue of four hundred and, uh, four million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, less our total expenses of four hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and, um, eighteen, uh, I'm sorry, four hundred and seven million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, giving us a net loss of approximately five point, uh, nine million. And so, in comparison to where we were last month this time, our net losses doubled, uh, where we were. And just, I, and I know, uh, Patrick and Ian will probably get in more detail, uh, but I believe we have spoken to the board. We, we're expecting that net loss to, you know, grow over the year as we get to year end and finalize all our cost settlements and so forth. Um, and that has been taken in consideration with even the BA two that is going to be presented to the board. So the five point eight is not all we're going to continue to push, so. And then our last page is just our top fifteen providers, uh, and, and it, for the dollars that were paid out. Any questions?
Any questions? I think you'll be anxious for next year's budget, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. With no questions, let's, uh, this will go forward for next week's board meeting to receive and file, so let's, uh, jump into the exciting next budget.
Okay. I believe Patrick is online. He's going to, uh, first going to the BA two amendment for FY twenty-four, which is the budget, and then Ian, who is sitting next to me, she's going to follow up with the FY twenty-five budget.
Whenever you're ready, Patrick.
Okay. So, um, what, what we have before us, I'd like you to go to the first sheet that shows the comparison between FY, uh, BA one that was presented to the board previously, uh, compared to BA two.
Excuse me, Patrick, if you can just speak up just a little bit. You're, you're sort of breaking out as you speak. Thank you.
I need to turn off all your mic.
There you go.
Is that better? Okay.
Yes.
So, um, I'm looking at the comparison between, uh, FY twenty-four versus FY twenty, um, BA one that was presented to the board, um, from May, and our overall, uh, revenue amount showed five, um, five hundred and fourteen million, uh, seventy-eight thousand, um, eight twenty-two dollars. Um, we, with this budget amendment, we're decreasing the, um, budget amount by, um, to reduce it down from five fourteen to four eighty-four, which is our projected revenue total for the remainder of the year in our BA two amendment effective as, uh, today, uh, with today's presentation. Um, in comparison to that revenue total, we're showing, um, expenses, we projected expenses on the BA one presented in May of five hundred and twenty-one million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand. Um, we showed a, um, net surplus or net, uh, loss at that time of seven point four million, uh, that we presented to the board. Uh, since that time, with the reduction of the revenue, uh, of twenty-nine million, twenty million being to Medicaid, and nine million being to the CCBHC, um, we're projecting, um, a fifteen million dollar shortfall for the remainder of this fiscal year. Um, we, we reduced the revenue by twenty-nine million, and we reduced our expense by twenty, um, for net surplus or loss of fifteen million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, four, four hundred and ninety-six dollars that we're projecting for FY, uh, twenty-four. Um, so this is an increase. Um, we know that some of the revenue has been reduced to more accurately reflect what we've actually received, and we're trying to true up what our, um, budget revenue is against, uh, what our budget expenses are to get a more accurate reflection of where, uh, revenues received and expenses incurred. Um, so those are some of the, those are some of the, um, things that contribute to this bu- bu- budget amendment. It, it, it's in line with our, um, FSR that was submitted to the, our projection that was submitted to the state, which show, um, four hundred and eighty-four being our actual projected revenue, and it's also in line with the financials that was just presented. Um, as of year-to-date, uh, revenue showing four hundred and two million, uh, dollars overall through July, which is, um, roughly, um, our run rate that we've been receiving in revenue, roughly about forty million dollars per month. And so, we, we believe that this budget amendment is more accurately affli- uh, reflecting where we are, um, and what our revenues and expenses actually are. Um, there, like Alan had mentioned, there was some projections. We overstated our revenue based on, um, based on data that we had received from the state, but something like the, all of the PH, PIHPs are experiencing, we have not, um, received all of the dollars that were, um, part of the amendment, uh, for rate, and so therefore we're adjusting our actual to reflect what it actually we received. Um, I know there was a comment made in the last rate adjustment saying that, um, there was a potential for the state to go and, um, do a rate amendment to, to, um, make PIHPs whole, but, um, we're not counting dollars that we haven't received yet. And so, it could help with this projection, but as of right now, we're presenting this budget based on, um, actuals. And so, I, I present this budget amendment, um, as BA two to the board.
Questions for Finance Committee? Any from the rest of the board?
I just, I just want to say, uh, and of course, I, we had a little glimpse of this with the Finance Committee meeting with the staff a couple of weeks ago. So, uh, it's, uh, very frustrating because we're not getting the money we were promised, and, uh, we did the budget in good faith, um, with that expectation. So, uh, unfortunately, you know, if, as we found out from, uh, Mr. Bolter, in addition to that, there's a shortfall. Uh, this isn't something our operations are causing or our providers are causing, but unfortunately, this puts us in a deficit position where we have a razor-thin, uh, what I'll call general fund reserve. Uh, there are reserves, but they're allocated for Medicaid and, and other purposes. So, um, this is a, not a good situation, uh, and it's exacerbated by the fact that the state is not providing the funding that was promised and approved, approved already. This has been pulled out of the budget and put on hold and being used for other purposes, not for mental health and purposes that we serve our providers. And I think, um, it's unfortunate we even have to talk about this, but it impacts us disproportionately because we're the largest organization in the state, right? Second, I'm sorry, second-largest organization in the state.
All right. Uh, we need a motion to recommend this EA two goes to the full board next week. For, yeah, motion support from Dr. Giles.
Dr. Giles?
Yep. Roll call, Sheila.
Uh, Dr. Giles? Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Young?
Yes.
For clarification is, we didn't appoint Dr. Guadalupe out of the Finance Committee yet.
Oh, what do we need to do?
Does she automatically assume the seat?
That's...
If there's a vacancy? Yeah.
When, when we come, I might suggest this, when she comes, so, when we come to other business, let's confirm her on the...
Okay.
Okay, because you have quorum.
Huh?
You have quorum without that, so we're good.
Okay.
Okay. Motion carries.
Okay. All right. Now on to the annual budget.
Okay, thank you.
You have two.
Thank you, Patrick, and good evening, Board. Um, Niamh Bland, and I am going to, uh, go over a high level of the FY twenty-five projected budget. We can pull that slide, please? Thank you. Okay. So, what I'd like to draw everyone's attention to here is just a few items as we go through it. Again, remaining high level. If we pull our eyes down to the, uh, fourth lower level tier of the summary to the budget revenue, I'd like to start there. Our revenues were challenged to estimate and project because at this point in time, we don't necessarily have all of the actual rates of what will be coming in. Uh, Friday, we did have a meeting with, uh, MDHHS and, um, Milman, and rates were not available at that time. So what we have, uh, determined to do is, we're going to begin our initial budget with where we left off for two thousand and twenty-four. And as you see here, our revenues are looking approximately the same as our projections for our FY twenty-four, uh, final BA two, okay? So that's, uh, the four million, excuse me, four hundred and eighty-four million, or four hundred and eighty-five million if we just do a rounding, okay? So, moving on to our expenditures, we've got here... So, moving on to our expenditures, we've got here, um, about a surplus of two point five million. Okay? Where are we going to get that surplus from? That's a flip of about two hundred, excuse me, twenty million. Now, we're looking at the different, um, administrative, there's two major areas. Uh, OCHN plans to have administrative efficiencies shifts for operations. And within those areas, we feel that the impact of those changes and adjustments are going to overall have a twenty million dollar impact to our FY twenty-four, excuse me, FY twenty-five budget over our FY twenty-four year ending. One of those areas is, um, in pulling back contracts from where we have delegated services to providers. For instance, transportation, um, bringing that in-house, uh, FMS services, that is the Financial Management Services, bringing that back in-house. The second area, uh, will be, and this is a major one, standardization of the rates. Um, looking at that, our utilization, uh, standardizing across all of our networks, we do feel that that's going to have a very large impact. Those two combined, we feel will actually bring our expenditures down by that twenty million, giving us, um, at this stage, a, uh, two point five surplus, small but impactful. Um, as we begin to get more of the actual numbers, I believe that the data should be available, uh, month in. Eddie, is that about right? For our, um, MDHH rates, we'll be in a better position to, um, budget out our revenues. And at that time, we'll also have better information on, um, captured data for utilization, different exposures, what our rates are actually going to be finalized. And those numbers, when tweaked, should be reflected in our BA, our BA one about December, somewhere around in that time. Uh, I'll open it up for any questions.
So I'll, I'll lead off with a question, then I know Pastor Jones probably has a couple. So for, you mentioned transportation, the FMS and standardizing rates, although the assumption is October first for implementation or kind of October phase in. So October first for implementation.
So it'll be October first for, uh, effective and then the implementation will kind of phase in.
Okay.
Okay? Which you'll find out with most of our fee-for-service, we have our rates that are actually being developed and some of them are in play, and it'll be a phasing in of those rates from our service models, which we are, uh, currently have, into the fee-for-service rates.
Okay. Good.
I figure within a quarter, quarter, the first quarter.
First quarter, okay, I, yeah, 'cause that's, that's, that's a lot of change plus, you know, kind of living it, um, a lot of orga, you know, shifting to, you know, the electronic recording and there's, there's probably more change going on in these last sixty, next sixty days than, you know, maybe in the last twenty years. Um, and, and some of it's practical, like I said, my, my daughter, um, provides, had provided before she had her baby. And the whole change to like electronically recording seems simple, but, um, you know, she found a glitch back in July. We have twins, right? So that was kind of a little nuance that, uh, they didn't think of, but they're working through it. So, is, I think as long as it's realistic that we're going to go through, not everything effective October first, I, I just think, if we were, I think we'd have a lineup out the door of, uh, people with questions and, uh, Eddie has enough work to do and I want to keep him here all night. Questions from other board members?
Thank you for your point. Thank you for raising that.
Yep. Dr. Hov?
Yeah, just to follow up your comment, the utilization as well. When, when are those going to be phased in and have there been conversations or how is that going to play out?
For clarity, I'm trying to understand what you're saying about utilization.
No, you said that the, the standardization of rates and all those sort of...
We have several services that are currently standardized rates and what we would call fee-for-services. And so we're transitioning those in phases. So SUD is one of the sets of rates that are standardized as well as, um, autism, even though they're going to face rate changes as it relates to some increases from the state that have already been communicated but not operationalized. So several of the areas, um, resident, is it residential or specialized residential, the rates are standardized. So there's several areas that already are standardized. And then what we'll, we'll start to do is actually publish those rates so providers are able to see what the rate is for all the services. So it, of course, is a phased-in approach. We really want to move away from the FSRs or the financial status reports and move to a claims-based system. Our claims off, uh, department actually started up on August first and they're slowly but surely, um, putting staff in place, doing trainings, putting some things in our system. So it's just not one piece, of course, but it's a multifaceted project that, you know, we want to make sure that people understand, but also want to make sure that there's no, um, delay or denial or, um, gaps in services. So we want to make this as smooth as possible. And even with the transportation, we're hearing, a number of people already are set up. There are about twenty or so people that we're following very closely to make sure that there are no gaps in their transportation services. So making sure that they, um, no one falls through the cracks, knowing that it's not going to be perfect, but as little pain as possible as we make these transitions.
So, on the provider and are they also on board with this, that they are going to be able to submit claims appropriately?
A- as we get into each area of the claims, we're working and we will be training providers on how that looks. Actually, and when you look at the Financial Management Service companies or organizations, they already submit claims. So they're already ahead of most of the system in terms of submitting claims for the services that they provide so they can be paid for that. Now they'll just be submitting them to us as opposed to the providers.
If no other questions, can I get a motion to recommend this to the full board next week?
So moved.
And support, thank you. Sheila can do a roll call?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you both and thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Hey. Now we shift to, uh, contractual obligations over a hundred thousand. The first one on my agenda is CNS with Suzanne.
Good evening. I want to present the CNS Healthcare, the Anti-Stigma Team. Um, this is a renewal, so for fiscal year twenty-five, ten-one through nine thirty, um, ten-one twenty-four through nine thirty twenty-five. Um, as you can see, this is renewal of three hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Um, and this is a community outreach team, uh, community education in both Oakland County, metro region, as well as nationally. Um, as you can see, a majority of the presentations are in Oakland County. About seventy-five percent of those are, um, required to be in Oakland County. And, um, we do receive a, uh, for the, a- as you can see, it is a longstanding contract. Um, and we bring this to the board just as, uh, an awareness. Um, but we do receive, um, reports on the status of the Anti-Stigma Team. And, you know, it looks, it's on track for having an impact of, um, impacting over almost six thousand individuals. Um, as noted on here, you can see that, um, our OCHN board member, Makai Newman, she supervises that team and we often ask her to come and, uh, present and, and show that, showcase the talents of that Anti-Stigma Team. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? If not, can I get a motion to recommend to the full board next week?
So moved.
Thank you. Sheila can do a roll call?
Dr. Giles?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
All right, next is Rosati, uh, Kalana. Next is Rosati, Kalana, can you walk us through that?
Yes, good afternoon or good evening.
Can't hear you, we can't hear you, Kalana. We can't hear you.
Still can't hear me? Not really.
Not really.
Well, but it's on her end though.
Yeah. Can we circle back to me, I want to try something a different...
No, that's better. That's better.
I literally did nothing. Okay. So, I don't know what's going on with the Grim ones today, but, excuse my face. Um, we have the contract for Rosati. Uh, currently they are primarily providing, um, a lot of employment and, uh, support with our Medicaid hearing hearings. Um, we expect there to be an uptick in the Medicaid hearing process or appeals process in the upcoming months with the new fiscal year, um, given some changes that we will be making, uh, administratively. Uh, so we are requesting to extend their contract, uh, and adding an additional fifty thousand dollars to their agreement. This will go and run through the end of the fiscal year for FY twenty-five.
Any questions? If not, can I get a motion to recommend to the full board next week?
So moved.
Sheila, roll call, both?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you, Kalana. Uh, third item, contractual. Orkeeta? Yes, I see you in the back row, come on up and walk us through, please.
Good evening, I am here to request approval for, I believe, two contracts that are on the agenda tonight. The first is our, uh, consulting firm that we've been contracting with for several years. The Hallack Group, they, uh, assist our staff in preparing for our NCQA reviews. They provide technical assistance, uh, for us. This is not an increase, it's, um, and their contract is just an extension. Um, are there any questions that I can answer about that?
Appears none, so. Can I get a motion to recommend to the full board next week?
So moved.
Support.
Sheila, roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, you're up again.
Uh, the next request is for, uh, Jefferson Wells. This vendor has been in a relationship with us for three or four years. They provide the Medicaid, uh, services verification audits for us. Um, they've done a very good job. They, uh, provide us with report findings and, uh, we've been very satisfied with their work. This is a requirement that we have to have in place with our, as per our contract with the state.
Any no questions? Can I get a motion to recommend to the full board next week?
So moved.
Sheila, roll call.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we'll turn over to, about for the, uh...
Can I mention something? You know, um, with what Suzanne's and, you know, what Rosati just did and what Kev you, I, I am impressed that, um, we sort of held the line over the years. Okay? And it's, it's very, very critical with Suzanne's report, uh, it's almost the same number of dollars year after year, uh, which is great. And since we're talking about being in this financial crises, it's really refreshing that we're able to look at, uh, continue the, the partnership with these companies, these organizations, and there has not been a significant, uh, increase in the cost of their services. So to staff and certainly to the CEO, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Turn it up.
Ms. Carley.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I am here to, uh, speak with you about the FY twenty-five annual plan. And, uh, over the past several weeks, uh, OCHN has been working diligently to, uh, conduct some outreach. We've held, uh, a community forum and, uh, presented this plan, uh, in its current draft form uh, to the community in order to get feedback and incorporate that into, uh, the plan going forward. Um, next slide. So, uh, FY twenty-five, um, this year's annual plan marks the third year, the third and final year of our current strategic plan. Uh, the current strategic plan, uh, was developed for FY twenty-three through twenty-five and so we're in our third and final year, um, under the current strategic priorities. Next slide. Uh, so, um, as part of our, uh, feedback and presentation to the community, to people served, um, what we did, uh, we, uh, conducted, uh, a lot of outreach, um, to develop the plan initially. Um, and then also some additional, uh, held some additional forums once the plan was drafted in order to get some final feedback. Uh, as part of the needs assessment process, uh, as you probably remember, earlier this year, um, as we do every year, uh, OCHN, uh, we conducted, uh, a lot of outreach, um, through digital means, uh, various community events in-person, um, surveys and, uh, reached, uh, uh, more than ten thousand people through constant contact, um, mailed the survey to more than three hundred service sites and then conducted, uh, in-person surveys at more than a dozen sites as well. In addition to posting it online to get that kind of feedback. Next slide. Um, so this year, uh, we had a really great, uh, success with, uh, the responses from the number of people served. So, um, this year, um, we had an increase of forty-seven percent in the number of people receiving services who provided feedback this time, uh, through the survey. So that was, uh, you know, we were really excited about that. It was, um, a very concerted effort and, you know, we continued to build on some of the strategies we've employed in the past couple of years, including the QR code that, uh, the communications team developed and, uh, continues to distribute, um, and, uh, translated the survey into Spanish. Um, and we also went to more, uh, SUD service sites as well this year. Um, so out of eight hundred and thirty-seven responses, uh, three hundred and seventy-one, um, respondents were people receiving services. So the feedback that we've received, um, next slide. Uh, the top five most important priorities and also the, the satisfaction rates from people receiving services, uh, the priorities from, and we heard, uh, we received feedback from the community members, family members, um, our various community partners and OCHN staff, the provider network as well. So, uh, in addition to people receiving services, uh, the top five priorities across all respondents, mental health treatment, crisis intervention, mental and physical health coordination, support for caregivers and transportation. And then in terms of, uh, satisfaction rates, uh, substance use prevention and treatment, uh, that was the, uh, highest satisfaction rate this year. Uh, the coordination of mental and physical health services, um, mental health treatment, crisis services, and then transportation to, specifically to doctor appointments and, uh, therapy. Next slide. So under the current, uh, strategic plan, which I mentioned is FY twenty-three through twenty-five, um, we've been continuing to, uh, build the annual plan under these priorities, uh, which are advocacy partnerships and, uh, community administration of the managed care system, access... access to non-emergent, urgent, and crisis services, integrated behavioral health care, improved system of care for children and families, and then also, uh, staff retention and the workforce development. Uh, so under the current, uh, annual plan, um, the, uh, communications team, uh, is working with, uh, other departments at OCHN to implement some key initiatives, uh, planned this year. Uh, there are two legislative events, uh, and then, of course, individual in-person meetings with legislators and other representatives, elected officials, um, to build those relationships and, uh, help, uh, new individuals to, um, those positions, understand the public health system, mental health system, uh, better. Um, and the team is planning, uh, at least twenty community events a month, um, and then, of course, continuing partnerships with providers, community leaders, grassroots organizations, and, uh, the work groups, um, for, uh, that are comprised of people receiving services. Next slide. So then administration and service delivery, that's, uh, primarily the operations, the managed care system. Um, so we're focusing on ways to improve and streamline the managed care operations, uh, and that includes, uh, stabilizing the budget after the public health emergency, um, which, uh, we just discussed in terms of the, um, budget for FY twenty five, uh, focusing on conflict-free case management to improve individual choice, um, and also, uh, managing, uh, the ISF in order to mitigate future risks and stabilize the network. Next slide. Uh, in terms of the integrated healthcare and crisis services, uh, OCHN has been working with Honor Community Health in Oakland County, uh, Public Health Department, to, uh, launch a walk-in center in Pontiac at Pontiac General. Um, it will be moving to, uh, a new location soon, and we'll have a formal launch, uh, coming up soon. Uh, but we've been working with, uh, partners in the community to increase, uh, access to behavioral health services, and so this is a very exciting initiative, um, that we're, uh, looking forward to continuing to develop in the upcoming year. Uh, we're also expanding, looking at ways to expand the crisis continuum of care, and that includes crisis de-escalation, uh, justice system supports and services, uh, including the threat assessment team, um, and co-responders, and additionally, uh, continuing to build on the YFCC, um, in Pontiac for children's crisis services. We also, uh, have a couple of programs that are focused on community violence intervention, uh, so implementing a state grant, uh, that we received, uh, in, uh, working with the community partners, um, in Pontiac to develop that, uh, uh, network and, uh, that program. So, it will, that was started in FY twenty four and will be continuing into twenty five, so we're looking forward to that. Um, and then additionally, um, next slide. Uh, in terms of the quality system of care and access, um, we are looking at ways to, uh, build on and develop, uh, clinical services. That includes, uh, working on, uh, uh, the application or the process for CCBHC, looking at ways to incorporate those requirements into our direct services, uh, expanding women's specialty services with, uh, medicated medication, uh, assisted treatment, and those providers as well. Um, and, uh, we're working on bringing the transportation contracts in, uh, and that means standardizing the rates across, uh, providers, uh, and, uh, implementing a process for, uh, tracking service implementation and, uh, making sure that that network is, uh, stable and, um, uh, that we have enough providers, a sufficient number of providers to provide, uh, that ongoing service for individuals. Um, additionally, uh, the access team and clinical team, um, they are working on building out in-person access points, uh, throughout Oakland County, so that's another, uh, exciting initiative, and increasing the mental health school navigator engagements as well. So, those are a few highlights, uh, for the services that are planned. Um, next slide. And then for staffing and retention, uh, OCHN continues to, uh, focus on building a positive work environment and, uh, implementing the employee service, survey recommendations. Uh, in the past, we've been working on the Great Places to Work Survey, uh, and will continue to, uh, determine which survey, uh, best, and approach, um, best fits the needs of the organization going forward in terms of meeting the goals for staff retention and, um, recruitment. Uh, additionally, uh, we're focused on, one of the core values at OCHN is inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. That's the idea committee, and so, uh, that committee is continuing to build out the work plan and strategy, um, that, uh, was started, uh, in the past, and also continuing to build on that for, um, fostering a culture of belonging, inclusion, and accessibility, uh, in terms of developing a career pathway for the behavioral health system. Uh, we are also planning to promote career opportunities and expanding the apprenticeship program. So those are some key highlights for the FY twenty five annual plan. Uh, we have, uh, the plan, uh, will be incorporating the budget, um, document those final documents into the draft plan, so, uh, everything is, uh, combined together and ready for review for the board in the next couple of days in preparation for, uh, the meeting next week. Um, so you can look forward to that, uh, and I can take any questions.
I'll be committing any questions.
Yep, let me, um, two things. One, um, on the service priorities and it lists the transportation doctors of therapy, ninety percent, uh, you know, was rated positive. And with- with the focus on transportation, that's- that's a good number. That's a good number. And, uh, I know we're struggling with that to understand, uh, how we would go forward controlling the transportation, but if we can keep those numbers, I think that's an exciting thing, uh, to say, and especially staying in budget. And then on a personal note, uh, the integrated healthcare crisis, the community violence intervention, uh, that the program started just about in May, July, very frankly, um, end of month of July, July the sixth, July fourth, there was a shooting in the city of Pontiac. Um, it was a block party. And this, uh, group came together, uh, starting in- in the month of May. And what's exciting is, since that, the city of Pontiac has had like eight community events, three carnival events, the high-risk areas of North Hill Farms, Newman Apartments, um, Carriage Circle, Riverside, nothing. It's been very quiet, very quiet, uh, which is pretty exciting. And the president of our council, President, uh, Mike McGinnis, had mentioned that in Berkeley, they had to stop their community events because of the activity that was going on. And as you know, during the state fair in Novi, there was a shooting there as well. So, uh, you know, just to highlight you all, great job, you know, you're talking, you got it here, and, uh, I think the results are just excellent, so, thank you, Frances.
Thank you, Pastor Jones.
Dr. Han.
Uh, I have several questions. Uh, first off, your survey, uh, what was the time period where, when the survey was gathered or the information was gathered? Because especially in the RRAC, many questions have occurred. So I just want to, uh, get an idea as to our plan corresponds to what the community actually needs. So that's my first question. Um, I- I- I can wait for the answers because I have several actually. Um, for the, uh, managed care operation streamline, uh, what is the start and end date for that, uh, utilization monitoring to be, uh, actually in effect? Because we've been talking about it in different ways for the last- last several months, and that's very important because it has a direct impact on our budget. So that- that's one question. Uh, the conflict-free case management, that, I think we need a presentation on that as to exactly, understand exactly how that is implemented at a, uh, person served level. What can they expect? That- that's one, and maybe we can in the future sometime do that. Uh, about the expanded crisis continuum of care, um, as, um, Pastor Jones mentioned, there's been several incidents. Are we thinking about prevention in collaboration with the health department and also the school system because, um, and that correlates to the access? Because the question that at RRAC was also raised was that a lot of the students who are eligible for services have no idea how to access. So I think our school navigator, uh, role and collaboration with school is important. So I think that we need to focus on that as well. Thank you.
Uh, would you like me to adjust those questions now?
It's survey, and I- I'm sure Dana can, uh, in the future, address those other questions that I have. Just the survey period, whether it corresponds to the needs that are identified today versus when the survey was gathered, because how do we kind of, you know, include what actually matters to people?
Yeah, and the timing for the needs assessment and the time that it takes to fill that out, um, uh, this is our pretty standard timeline, and the needs assessment was, uh, taking place in the spring, which is, um, you know, our pretty typical timeline for the annual planning.
Did you want me to try the, I think the second question had to do with managed care utilization. So with managed care utilization, we're looking very closely at the services that are being authorized and the actual use in terms of over or underutilization of those services, and making sure that when people have an individual plan of services, it aligns with what's in that plan and that people are getting the services and supports and the duration and the time in which it's identified in their, um, plan of service. And one of the things that we're really working closely with is just to make sure that people understand their plan of service, actually are getting, uh, we're seeing a lot of individuals who are on, um, the self-directed plans, which is amazing, but also making sure that they're getting the budgets and things of that nature that go with it. So managed care really is looking at making sure that the services and supports are available. Um, you may remember, maybe about a year or now, two years ago, we expanded our children's network to five additional providers. And what we're seeing is that we still have two primary providers for children with serious emotional disturbances, but the other remaining five providers, we're trying to build up their capacity so people have more choice, but also so that, um, they're not forced to go into one particular location or area, that the children's providers are spread out and can provide those services as well.
Who authorizes the services? It's, uh, is the provider, uh, network or is it us that we authorize them?
The way it works, and this is the way I've understood it for many, many, many years, I hate to admit, but the plan of service, the individual plan of service is sort of like a contract or treatment consent. And so that's really authorized by the person and their family or their guardians, and the person's involved in developing that plan, right? So it really does serve as, this is a contract, we're going to provide these services at this amount and this frequency, and they're going to start on this date and end on this date. But in actuality, when those services get put into our system, we have benefit plans. So as long as the services are within the utilization guidelines, they automatically get authorized. If there is a service request that goes over or beyond what's in the service plan or what's in our utilization guidelines, then it goes to a specialist in utilization management to review to make sure that those additional services or supports are clinically appropriate. And it also works the other way to make sure that people are getting enough of the services. So if you see an individual who has a lot of services, but they're also in and out of the hospital or the ED, that means that there's something there that we should look at closely and see why those individuals are struggling or their plan is not working for them, maybe it's not working for them, maybe they need to change a therapist or something of that nature. The other thing that we also see is sometimes services are overauthorized and the person doesn't use the services. So we're looking at ways, and that also impacts our funding as well, because we want people to have the services and supports they need, but also have choice in terms of which services and supports they take advantage of. The other question you had, Kim, you want to add to that?
Okay.
I do. I just want to add a little bit about service utilization. Uh, Dana gave a wonderful, um, short, um, little, uh, passage about how our services are authorized. But I also want you to understand that we know that we can, um, do better, right? We're always looking at how we can improve. So our, uh, UM department, we're also looking at, um, stratifying some of the work that they're already doing so that they can go ahead and, um, have more opportunity to review those requests for service. And as Dana mentioned, right, in the hands of the providers to work with the families and persons served, identify the needs, and once that's done, then, um, if, as she said, within the benefit package, it's auto-approved, right? We've had some pretty high level of auto approving going on, right? So what we're also looking at is how we can understand utilization from, uh, past, and then maybe lower some of those amounts that are auto-approved so that we can take a better look and understand, and so when it's not auto-approved, it comes over into the hands for a manual review, right? So any, um, request for a service that is over what we think is suggested and appropriate for the need, we, um, ask for more documentation to take a look at it a little bit more, um, to understand if this is appropriate and that. And then, uh, we believe that by doing that, by allowing our, um, UM staff to have time to consider more of those referrals, because we're already reducing some of those, um, units that are in the benefit plan for CLS right now, but we're also looking at others so that we'll be able to understand better the utilization and ensure that what we're authorizing is truly what is necessary and not giving this overabundance of service authorized at a point when we should probably look a little finer. That makes sense. And then you ask when? So, um, ten one is really my, uh, thought that we could work together with not just utilization, but also with finance too, to see, because sometimes we don't see it right away. We have an IT as well to ensure that the information that we're getting is, uh, we're all looking at the same thing. We're all understanding our patterns and understanding what we might need to do to be sure that we utilize funds appropriately and authorize services. Because again, it's a medical necessity is medical necessity, right? But you still want to understand that you're not overdoing something, and what is, um, authorized is authorized. So we're going to look together across to see how we're doing with those things. Does that answer? You're quite welcome.
I think the final thing you asked about was our crisis continuum, and the way that we're looking at that does include prevention, early intervention, treatment, and recovery. So it's always on this circular wheel where we're looking at how do we prevent crisis? And then we need to make sure that the continuum is comprehensive enough so that we have routine requests for services, urgent requests for services or same-day services, and then emergency or crisis, um, supports when needed. And so we want to make sure that all of our crisis services are in place, and the four basic ones are the crisis calls, the mobile crisis- And the four basic ones are the crisis calls, the mobile crisis team, our crisis stabilization unit, and crisis residential services. So right now, we have those four components. Um, we do want to add in and fill in some of the gaps. And the way that we're doing that, if you look at what we're doing with the county and with Honor, we have this integrated urgent care, what we are calling a walk-in center. And so they provide same-day services. It's been a soft launch, a slow launch, but we've already seen 700 people and, and only a fragment of those people get referred to the mental health, uh, supports that we have there. But we're thinking that the more we open up and expand those hours, that you're, we're going to see a greater need for mental health intervention, which includes housing needs, uh, transportation needs, food security. So it's really going to open up a full array of how we prevent people from being in a full-blown crisis, but how do we make sure that they're engaged in the services and supports that they need? And so as we're doing that and expanding access, we've been given an opportunity through Oakland County Health Department to utilize their space in Southfield to have a mental health coordinator there. So if they encounter someone who needs mental health supports, whether they're looking at vaccines or whatever the health department has to offer, we can also connect them to the mental health services there. We would like to do that in other areas because I can't deny what Ms. Sarah May has said many times, that we have sort of a desert in Oakland, upper Oakland County. And we really do want to fill in some of those gaps we have. And we want to recruit providers to do the work there as well.
Dana, can I add a little bit about the violence prevention?
Sure.
That she mentioned? Um, so if you remember about two years ago, we did our community, uh, blueprint for, uh, violence prevention. So that's what we have used to, um, obtain grants, like the, um, MDHHS grant that Frances mentioned in Pontiac. Um, also we'll be, I can't announce it yet, but we'll be getting some funding for our behavioral threat assessment and management, where for the last two years, we've been working closely with Oakland schools in training K through 12, um, behavioral threat assessment teams. We also launched in March, our community BTM team, um, which will be able to expand in partnership with Oakland County Emergency Management and the Sheriff's Office soon to really look at, um, that county-wide behavioral threat assessment and management, which is really kind of that very beginning prevention of our sequential intercept model that our justice team is, is managed, that we can divert children from the justice system, but also look at, again, how we, um, get them into treatment, um, when necessary. So we work closely with Oakland schools through our school mental health navigators. They're all trained in BTM as well, um, along with our school, um, our schools that they, uh, enter in as well. Um, and I'm missing one more thing. That one I can't announce, but I will have an announcement soon for you on that. But hopefully that answers on the violence prevention.
And I, uh, we left out SUD, but we know Megan's coming up next, so we'll, we'll address it. We never want to leave out SUD, but I know Megan is up next.
Ms. Newman has a question.
Thank you. Frances, I don't expect you to, uh, answer this question today, but I would like to know how, what, what is the process that we're using to standardize the rates, especially with transportation, because it's already a, a sensitive topic? And what are we doing to make sure we don't have people stranded, um, without their transportation? So I don't expect you to have an answer to, for that today, but I would like, um, like to see a, a presentation on that.
I'd like to follow up on Ms. Newman's question. So Mr. Cowan already asked for a presentation on transportation update, and that will be done at the September board study session.
Okay, thank you.
I'll provide that information then.
Any other questions, um, Mr. Cowan?
Uh, I'll just make my annual pitch, um, on one topic that's near and dear to my heart, and that is that, uh, we find ways to facilitate, um, social, athletic and, um, health opportunities in terms of physical health, um, for the communities that we serve. I think we all know that after COVID, we had a, a breakdown in the system. A lot of the churches and other organizations that did dances or gym nights or whatever, it kind of all fell apart, uh, for, for a large part. And I would really like to get, even if someone could just put together a list of the activities or groups, um, you know, whether it be Special Olympics, Team Duts, there's, there's a number of different groups, but it's, what I would hope one day we could get to is that somehow we would have a page or something that our, you know, folks could come onto and find out. It's very hard to put that information, even if you're a group home or a parent, to see what's available. And I think we, if there, if, and if we could, uh, facilitate those types of activities, I think that's really important.
I, I just want to add that, I mean, it's part of my community update that is coming up, but we are heavily involved with Oakland County Parks and their, um, adaptability activities.
Yeah, that's right.
So, um, we are, we're, we're working diligently with them and adding more and more. You're going to see a whole list of them with the community update. So we are trying to address some of those aspects.
Well, if, maybe I'll make this suggestion and I'll be willing to work with you, put my mouth, you know, my, my money where my mouth is or time where my mouth is, is it's very hard for families and, and even, even organizations to find those opportunities. So, because I don't know how Oakland County Parks gets out their information. And by the way, there's a lot of county parks in the north, there's very few in the south, so part of the county. So I would just ask if there's a way we can, even if we had a page, that, that kept those different kinds of things updated that people could go to, um, and find, or at least get contact with the organization, I think that would be a really excellent thing that we could do.
It's a great suggestion on our website.
We'll work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of that, I know that Trinity Health is doing a lot with, uh, senior fitness and that's getting seniors more out, um, to deal with, it helps them with emotional issues, socialization and what have you. So that may be another reference, uh, that we could use, but, uh, they are spreading that, uh, through several different areas.
Right.
In Oakland County, I can bring you some information on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carly, um, based on performance last year, were there any changes to the target?
In terms of the, uh, assessment?
Yeah.
The survey results?
Yes.
Um, well, uh, what we saw, a few, uh, things in terms of the satisfaction that, um, rates, and I think that was part of the, the expanded outreach and in-person visits, uh, was the satisfaction rate for substance use services, um, through the network. And so, uh, that, that was a significant change. I think the, uh, we, we did have, I think, a, a broader response rate. And so, uh, from more, uh, I'd, I would say diverse groups or representation, uh, in terms of, um, the types of community partners and, uh, uh, that way this year. And, uh, so the priorities, um, I think the top five priorities, uh, are pretty much similar to what we had last year. I didn't really see that much difference except for the rates. So, you know, last year, say, mental health treatment was a top priority, um, at, I think it was more of a 90% level, but then it was, uh, a lower as, as far as the top priority this year, I think somewhere in 70%. So, um, I think having that, uh, different range of respondents, um, uh, brought in, uh, some different priorities, different ways to, um, to look at things and, uh, kind of spread out, uh, what the, what the goals were, what the focus was, um, within the community. Um, and then in terms of, uh, building out the annual plan, um, being in the third year, uh, we were also building on the previous two years. And so looking at it that way, what is the next step? And what is the next step for, uh, building out the children's services, the crisis continuum, um, strengthening the managed care, uh, operations? And so we're continuing on kind of that logical path and, uh, getting to the next step, the next level that way.
Okay. And I do want to thank you. It was a very nice layout. It was a concise way of presenting the information. So thank you for the time that went into putting this together. There are no further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Sheila, because the budget and stuff is not included, uh, do I still need to, do I do it as a receive and file or do I need to have a voice vote?
Uh, so you would include, approve the annual plan as presented?
Yes, okay.
Yep. So you just make that motion?
Okay.
Or you, from the policy? Yep.
Uh. I make a motion that we receive the annual plan and recommend it to the full board.
Support.
Okay, may I have a voice call?
Sure. Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do you miss anybody? No, we're good.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips? How are you tonight?
I am doing very well, thank you. How are you?
I am well.
Good.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. I am happy to be joining you back here. I feel like I was just here a month or two ago. So I am back. So, uh, for some new faces but old faces, um, I'll reintroduce myself. I am Megan Phillips. I'm the Director of SUD Services here at OCHN. Um, today I will be giving you an update on our three-year SUD strategic plan. We are in year one of it. Uh, we are at year one, and I'll be giving you an update on all the items, uh, well, I'll be pulling out the key highlights of items that we have done so far this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Um, so first and foremost, I just want to remind everyone, the SUD strategic plan, it looks a little bit differently than the OCHN strategic plan. And how we go about collecting the information as well and what leads up to it is also different. So because of the federal funding that we receive under SAMSA, we are required to do the SUD strategic plan every year, which is why it is separate than the OCHN strategic plan. Um, we are also required to follow, um, the strategic prevention framework. So it is a very prescribed set of questions that we have to go through when we are writing our three-year report and strategic plan. Um, so it is all very prescribed. It's not information we are able to go in and make changes to, MDHHS. They give it to us at the beginning of when we're doing our planning, and they say, this is the rubric you must follow, which then for OCHN, uh, for the strategic plan, it does look a little different because for OCHN, we are able to make some changes, look at, um, the type of questions we're asking and the follow-up questions we're asking, and we are able to make changes there. Um, so I'll start off this evening talking about prevention first. So next slide, please. So for our prevention timeline, um, for some of the items we're doing, uh, one of the first items on here is the continue the community epidemiological work group and the community prevention planning collaborative on an ongoing basis. So these two work groups are something that we have been doing, um, when we have been planning, uh, our strategic plan. So we've only been conducting them every three years. But really what we found, and when we came together last summer, uh, when we were putting together the strategic plan, those community partners, partners, those frontline workers, part of the suggestion that they gave for our strategic plan was to keep this going every year, um, to have this be an item that is standing, that we are continuing to do and not just doing it when it's time for our strategic plan to be due. And I, well, I agree, it's, it's, we really need to be able to hear from our community partners, our provider network. The reason for the two different work groups is you have one work group that is made up of more of your frontline workers. And so they make recommendations for what they see, and then that feeds into the larger work groups, which usually contains the community partners that we have, Oakland County, the Health Division, the Sheriff, um, CEOs, so really the executive higher-level individuals that have the ability to impact policy change. Um, and so we then come together and we looked at everything as a whole to say, what are, what are the goals and, um, uh, strategic priorities that we should be looking at? So for this fiscal year, the intent was to have this stood up. And unfortunately, we were not able to have this stood up yet. Uh, we started planning, um, about right after the first of the year. We had tentatively and internally put, um, items on our calendar to start to have the invitations go out. And, uh, OCHN is no different than our provider network and everyone else who can be struggling with, um, workforce issues. So in my department, including myself, there's nine individuals. I'm currently down three individuals, and I've been down three staff since the end of March. So one of those people is my prevention coordinator. I do not have one right now. So our SUD manager, she's doing double duty. She is doing her role and she's doing the prevention manager role. For myself, I am doing my role as director, and then I'm doing all the grant coordinating activities well and all the reporting to the state and updating of our 54 work plans every quarter to the state of all the work we've done. So unfortunately, with that lack of staff, we were not able to launch this yet. We are very excited and very much looking forward to this. Our goal is going to continue on. We've only paused it until we are able to hire more individuals. And once we are able to hire, this will be a priority for us to be able to start to do these groups. Um, one of our next goals for prevention were to expand our overdose education and naloxone distribution, our O E N D throughout the county by expanding access and implementation to harm reduction materials. Um, so we, um, we, we identify this goal as completed, but really whenever I say completed, it's never completed in my mind. It just means we met that number on paper. Our goal was to have through our provider, the alliance, um, for fiscal year '24, 100 Save-A-Live stations across Oakland County, which we reached that goal. Um, and so very quickly, we said, well, there's still such a high interest, we still have, um, communities and municipalities still reaching out to us saying, we want these. So, uh, our new goal for the year was, um, 150. So, uh, we are still working on that with the alliance, but that initial goal of 100, we have reached it. Um, and then also for prevention, increase effective media messaging to prevent substance misuse. Um, we're very fortunate with some of the funding that we received, um, these past two fiscal years. Uh, we have received COVID supplemental block grant funds. Uh, we refer to them behind the scenes as C-SUGs. Um, and so with that, we've been really, uh, been able to take a look, um, working hand in hand with communications. They have looked at their entire large calendar, their media schedule of what we're doing, and they were able to say, well, what are, what are gaps that we could use the funding to fill in with? Um, and so they were able to look at and see, uh, for social media posts, billboards, um, cable, uh, advertising and commercials. I know I was very excited when I started seeing the commercials on Channel Four and on Channel Seven, um, and then as well as the radio advertising, really branching out. I'm always the type, being new in my role, I think I've been in this director role now for two years. Um, and whenever something comes up, the first thing I say is, well, why are we doing it that way and what's the history? And it's not to say anything we've been doing is wrong, I'm just a different set of eyes, right? And so that's what I always like to look at. So, um, even with our radio ads, just looking at different radio stations, you know, I was just a, somebody to say, hey, what about, you know, what are we doing? And can we look at some different radio stations that, you know, um, might be more appealing to, um, multitude, uh, of individuals? Um, so yes. to, um, multitude, uh, of individuals?" Um, so yes, uh, next slide, please. All right. I will pause for a minute. Does anybody have any questions on prevention?
I don't know if this is the right time, Megan. First, I want to thank you for the work that you do, and, uh, I'm excited about serving on the opioid committee with you as well, which really is a question. Um, on your side, prevention timeline, and it's the, uh, it said the goal of one hundred, uh, Save-A-Live stations in Oakland County was reached, and, and I've had some people have asked, "Can they get one of those states?" And I don't know if there's an opening or not, uh, for others. They, they keep asking me every week that I see them. And so I'm wondering, do I give that to you, or, you know, to Tricia, who?
You can. You can send, um, you can have them contact me, and I can get them connected to the right person. So it's probably easier just send everyone my way.
Okay, so I, I would do that. Then secondly, based on this, and I know in the meetings that we've had, and we've talked about, uh, the shift in, um, drug usage.
Mm-hmm.
And we talked about that shift impacting more seniors now.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm, I'm wondering, the process that we're working with, are we combining that information that makes us even more effective, uh, because of the shift in, I think it now the fifty, sixty, seventy-year-olds and what have you? And, and I won't get into the, um, ethnicities, but, uh, hopefully we're looking at that as you, uh, make out your timeline plans.
Yes, so that was a part of our last, um, strategic plan. I believe it was the third year of our last strategic plan was to increase services, um, for the older adult population. And so we've done that, um, our provider, two of our prevention providers, they do a program that's called WISE. Forgive me, I could not tell you the acronym of what it stands for right now. But really, it is intended for not just to address substance use or potential misuse with an older generation, is to look at the whole person and look at what their medical needs are, and really look at embracing the aging process and what goes along with it, and the need to address medical needs, physical health needs. Uh, is there a substance use disorder present, or does that, is that something that needs to be addressed? So there's an entire evidence-based curriculum that's utilized. And so if you come across anyone that has any, um, interest in that, you can feel free to, again, give them my name, and I can get them connected. We had, um, the other day, we had a assisted care living that reached out to us looking for a presentation, and I immediately said, "We can do that for you, but what we can actually do is connect you with our provider who's doing the WISE program." And, you know, take a listen to them, and that might be a better fit because it's a long-term program, and it's of no cost to that assisted living, um, entity at all. So that is something that we pay for through our grants, and our provider was able to go out to them and provide that service to them.
On, on that subject then, and, and, and I probably have to ask my sister over here, um, C N S is very active or, uh, noted within the Pontiac community. And I'm just wondering, when we look at the, uh, persons who are trying, especially age group, if, if that's a contact that we make or you're associated with them, I know we're one of their providers, but I'm just wondering if that's another area that we can tap, uh, to reach the seniors in that area because they are familiar with, and there's this trustworthy issue. And so if they feel that they can trust C N S or what have you, and if we can work through them with this, I'm just wondering if that's another way we can, um, become more effective and...
I think that is another way, and I think those are some great thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I'll stop asking questions.
No, you're good. All right. I will move along into treatment then.
Wait, I have one comment and question.
Yes.
Do you know, is there an Oak Street Health in Pontiac?
Okay.
There's an Oak Street Health, uh, and, and, uh, they have some outreach as well. As a matter of fact, growing some, similar to gaining, and, and I don't know who I spoke with some time ago, but the big issue right now across ethnicity lines is trustworthy.
Yeah.
Trustworthy. And so what's very, very important is if there is a group or an organization that in effect has received that level where they trust you, then we can do something on it. And that's the issue that, with the seniors and what have you, uh, in that area, uh, that we need to do that. But Oak, Oak Street Health is there, and they're good, good, uh, sources.
Yeah, that'd be a good partner because they specifically serve, I think it's fifty-five and up, or sixty-two and up, or those with disabilities. Um, so that would definitely cross over our population that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, on to treatment. Um, so one of our goals for treatment, continue to support healthcare integration and review outcomes of our opioid and S U D health home and determine if R F P network-wide is needed. So this one is in process. It, and I, I say it's in process because have we determined if we need a network-wide R F P yet? No, but we also haven't had a chance. The, the paradigm of what this looks like is actually shifting. So to take you back, um, a year or two, when the health homes started up, uh, O C H N stands, and S U D department stands, we always said, "We want to do an S U D health home" because we don't want to limit it. Well, yes, the opioid epidemic is a problem, and it's an area to be addressed. We are always one that says, "We want to look at what is the service and be able to offer it to all individuals who are suffering from substance use disorder." So when it came to doing a health home, we wanted to do, uh, an S U D health home to ensure we were encompassing all substances. Um, M D H H S said, "That's fine. That's great." And then a couple of months later, they came back to us and said, "Yeah, you can do your S U D health home, but we're volunteering you to also do the opioid health home." And so we said, "Okay, not a problem. We will happily do that then," um, because they wanted to make sure the opioid health home was something that was launched statewide. So, uh, we had our opioid health home, specific for a person with an opioid use disorder and Medicaid, and all other individuals could be captured underneath our, uh, S U D health home. Well, in that time, um, you know, kudos to us. The state has come to see, well, the, the, the way that you guys wanted to do this and be able to ensure to service everyone, that was really the way to go. Uh, so right now, the state is in the midst of transitioning everyone to an S U D health home. And there are no longer being two health homes out there, an opioid health home or an S U D health home. There will just now be an S U D health home. So that is for about the past six to eight months, what we've been working closely with M D H H S on, having to have an updated handbook, receive that information, prep our current providers for that process change. And so then come after the first of the year, we can now really sit back, get everyone transitioned over to the one health home, and then we can look at network-wide and say, "Okay, do we need that R F P now?" So we don't want to try to overwhelm and do too much at one time and say, "Oh, we're going to transition everyone" and try to R F P this out. No, no. Let's get our current folks, uh, transitioned over, and then we can look at an R F P. Uh, our next, um, goal was to continue to advocate for the implementation of Project Assert in our local emergency rooms. Um, for those of you who've been, um, on the board for quite some time, Ms. Newman, I know that you have been, um, it, you have seen this goal, I know, year after year after year. We have not let it go, nor will we, uh, because we believe it is so important, um, the type of work and partnership that we could do together with area hospitals. Um, and so I am, I cannot, we are currently further along than we have ever been along with an area hospital, so that is very exciting to me. Um, we have an M O U. We are working through the discussions with that hospital. I have my fingers crossed that once it is signed, I can share the name. Um, and we have had those discussions of, "Let's pilot this, you know, for one, uh, hospital right now." They have multiple hospitals across Oakland County, and so the intent is pilot one. If it goes well, we expand. Um, so that is there, so I have, uh, fingers crossed. So that is certainly in process, and will continue into fiscal year twenty-five. Um, and then the third goal, evaluate and identify administrative efficiencies to increase ease of access to services and to assist in workforce, uh, retention. So one of the things that commonly happens, you know, I think especially if just changes happen, you have the pandemic happen, all these changes come down the pike, um, in terms of what, uh, paperwork requirements are and what are contract requirements. And again, fresh eyes with myself coming in, I'm very quick to say, when a provider's saying, "Why do we need to do this?" Instead of it just being the fast answer of, "Well, it's in the contract," my answer is always, "Who put it in the contract, and where does it stem from? Is it an M D H H S requirement? Is it an O C H N requirement? Can we make any changes with it?" To try to ease burden on the provider, which is essentially trickling down and helping ease, um, any burden on persons served, right? So the more that we can do to lessen, um, I just call it the stringent requirements, that, right? Like, it's what we know is required to be done, but what can we do that helps make things easier for our providers, which in turn also helps assist them with the workforce issues? Um, so we have started meeting with our providers. We meet with them monthly. Um, we review with them our electronic health record system, O D N. We also look at our contract requirements. And so changes that we've been able to make during this past fiscal year. For prevention, we work to lessen our contract amendments needed by making changes in our contracts. We had people's, um, staff names in there, but if we had staff turnover internally ourselves, we would then have to issue a new contract. And I'm going, "No, no, no. That's, how much time is that taking from our contracts department, the S U D department?" So really taking all names out, streamlining a process to make it simpler, making any documents that can get changed, um, throughout the year because M D H H S requirements change for reporting requirements, getting them outside of the contract, putting them on our extranet, but referencing them in the contract still. So now when something changes, we don't need to issue a contract amendment. We're able to just update that updated worksheet on our extranet and not have to go through that entire process. Um, we've also created a smart sheet for our monthly reporting, as well as our invoices for prevention. Um, prevention, oh, that's, uh, so for prevention, how things are billed, it is all done through, um, we use M B O as measurement by objectives. So it is not, you, you do not have with prevention Medicaid codes that are tied to it. It's not a Medicaid reimbursable service. Um, so everything that comes in, comes in via invoices to us. Um, so really streamlining that process of receiving over twenty-some emails a month of invoices coming in, state reports coming in from those prevention providers, through creating a smart sheet where we don't have to search through our email, emails now to find it. Um, we've also taken away having for toxicology reports to have to be updated in O D N, which is very time-consuming. We audit for those, uh, every year. The S U D network, we go out, we conduct our annual audits. We check for them. It's in the contract. You must have so many, um, toxicology, uh, screens done on individuals per month. We look for it. We mark it, but we no longer require a provider to enter it into our E H R system because it's a time-consuming process. And next slide. Uh, expand capacity for adolescent withdrawal management. This is something that is still in process as well. Uh, my hope is that we will have an R F P released for it before the end of this fiscal year, or it's going to be starting around the beginning of the fiscal year. This is an area that we have known, and this is not a unique issue to Oakland County. This is a statewide issue, the lack of S U D, um, withdrawal management and residential treatment providers for kids. That is a statewide issue. Uh, we talk, I meet with the P I H P directors, the nine other ones, once a month. M D H H S joins us, and this is always a hot topic that we're discussing, and saying, "What can we do collectively together?" Because part of the problem is the requirements that are put on a provider. So the gain, um, assessment is a huge requirement that has to be done for kids that, um, businesses and organizations, they don't want to do, and then it's across the entire state as well. Um, the amount of kiddos that we have to refer, it is just not there. So it makes it very challenging for a business to sustain. Um, and so, uh, we do want to put out our feelers, see if there's anything else out there. I suspect we might not get much back, but I would rather put out and see what we can get to understand with certainty than to not put out anything at all. Um, and then to continue, uh, and support our workforce development. So this, uh, past fiscal year, um, we worked very closely with our communication department to organize a community resource fair and job expo, uh, that will be taking place in October. I know Suzanne will talk about it and give the date and all the information. Um, and so, uh, we're very excited about that. We even have the Director of, um, the Michigan, um, Addiction Certification Board and professionals comment how pleased they were, uh, to see a P I H P take such an active role with the workforce issues. Um, and so the Director of M C B A P will join us and have a table there. Um, the event will be held at Oakland University. Um, the intent is for it to really, um, provide resources to people working in the field, but also, um, we have asked for organizations' H R departments to be on-site and offer on-demand interviews right there. Uh, so we're very excited about that as well. And next slide. All right, my favorite part, recovery. Yay, recovery. Yeah, before, um, I talk about it, I, I know Suzanne will talk about it, but I can't help myself. I get very excited when I talk about our recovery celebration coming up. So September eighteenth, right, Suzanne? September eighteenth? When's the re- twentieth? See, that's why I need Suzanne. September twentieth here will be our recovery celebration, so I would very much encourage you, if you are able to, please come. Um, we have an individual, uh, who's in recovery, who's also a hip-hop artist from Pennsylvania. His name is Colichi. He will be coming, uh, and being our guest speaker, as well as performing. He has quite the social media following of about seven hundred and fifty thousand individuals. Um, and so we are aware of people coming as far away as New York to our recovery celebration here in Oakland County. So we are very excited. That's my plug, and I'll leave the rest to Suzanne. So for the strategic plan, um, I think one of the things that was the most challenging for our recovery, for our strategic plan, um, again, we worked with messaging, uh, that went with prevention as well, about developing our social media posts, really changing up some of our language, promoting things like "Join the Recovery Movement", looking at our slogans and taglines that we're using, and using things like that. But really the intent and where we wanted to go this next three years for our recovery timeline is we wanted to have a recovery community organization or an R C O. Um, and we had an R F P go out for it. We had funding, um, through grants that we were going to be able to use to start it up. And then unfortunately, the entity that, uh, contract was awarded to, they weren't able to continue to follow through with it. Also at that time, we then had leadership changes with our CFO, and we said, "Okay, we've got to sit back. A new CFO needs to come on board, and then we got to talk financials. It's an expensive project." Um, it's probably, it cost us about five hundred thousand dollars a year. So I'm like, "Well, we have a new CFO coming in. We need to wait a minute, work with our new CFO to say, "Does this align strategically? Do we have the funding?" Um, and so since that time, uh, we just have not been able to, there's been a lot of funding changes that have made us just put it on hold for a minute. I am not letting it go. I'm a firm believer in the fact that I believe our county does need, um, an R C O. We need to be a leader in recovery. When you look at the continuum of care, we have prevention, we have treatment. Do we have recovery? Yes, but are we leading recovery? Are we being that leader in our community on recovery? We are not. And that's something that I very much want to change, so I have not let it go. Um, but I do need to wait a minute and let the money settle right now. Um, we had, we're going to have some of our grants changed. Our COVID grants is ending. We will have ARPA continue. Um, our SOAR funding changed, um, where we lost, uh, which is different than the governor's SOAR program, our state opioid response grant. We received a one-point-four-million-dollar cut in our SOAR funding. So, um, I didn't want to push along, uh, trying to receive approval for an R C O and look at the funding, uh, for a minute. Uh, we need to just take a minute, let our fiscal year twenty-five budget and those items be addressed, and then I'm going to be coming back around and looking for funds for that R C O, so. Any questions on the total S U D Strategic Plan?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, how many medication-assisted treatment programs are there in Oakland County?
We have, that we contract with, we have three providers with four locations.
Okay. And have, um, you know, C R F forty-two Part Eight changed in April, but the implementation date, uh, is actually October one. October 1? So how are you ensuring that they are going to meet the implementation of CRF 42?
So we have been talking, and just so, I won't go into it long and make it drawn out, so the 42 CFR Part 8, essentially what it's doing, it is changing the requirements regarding take homes, it's really making it individualized, and it allows for a person served to essentially receive take homes as long as the doctor finds that they're appropriate and eligible, and that could mean their first day. It is very much loosening a lot of guidelines that were very tight, that like, you couldn't get take homes for almost a year, right? So...
Well, 90 days just for weekends.
Just, yes, 90 days just for weekends.
But now you can get 30 days.
Mm-hmm. So that, that's what the intent is behind it. So I will say a couple of different things on that. One, we still don't have the full policy. We know what 42 CFR Part 8 is. Within our, within MDHHS and the policy they have written for MAT services and specifically methadone, they have not updated that policy yet. So we are awaiting that, we're told we should be receiving it soon, because it is very much needed for us to be able to give to our providers. But since April, we have been working with our MAT providers individually, our medication assisted treatment providers. We have met with them collectively as a group and then as well as individually to say, what are you doing to change this and what are you doing to comply? Because of course, their concern is, the language of how it's laid out, it seems, it can be interpreted that it can, that a person doesn't, doesn't have to receive any clinical service at all. And that's not the intent behind what SAMSA wrote. The intent behind what they wrote was for services to become more individualized, not a blanket statement of, oh, you just came into treatment, well, everybody who just comes into the program, you have to wait at least 90 days. SAMSA's intent was, no, you need to be able to look at everyone individually, say, based on XYZ, you can start receiving take homes. And then also it takes away any punitive measures that if a person was noncompliant with clinical services, it can't interfere with the medical services they're receiving with the medication. But that's, I spend a lot of time talking to MDHHS, I had some providers just who were concerned that we can't sustain as a clinic if we're just here to provide the medication and not clinical. And even SAMSA said, yeah, we didn't, or that is good.
Because the billing part comes on the clinical side.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I was just wondering how your staff is going to make sure that your programs are adhering to those new standards?
Part of what we've asked is, we've asked for our providers to submit the policy to us. We also know from, from my last meeting with MDHHS this past month, that the feds are going to come out and spot check providers and...
And effective October 1, the accrediting bodies will be doing that crosswalk, making sure that there's new policies and procedures to implement SAMSA's change.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Turning the meeting back over to Mr. Young, is he down there?
I'm going to, unfortunately, John had to leave.
Okay.
You may be aware, he became a grandfather yesterday.
Oh, no.
And he's pinch hitting for his daughter at a foundation dinner where she was receiving an honor tonight. So I told him, you got to go, you know, he's got, he's got things to do, so take care of the family. So I'll just, we just got a few items left, so I'll just, I'll just pick these up. So first we have Suzanne Weiner, is going to talk about events and outreach.
Hello again. I'll try to be as brief as possible, as brief as I can, because there are so many events going on, they come in daily, it feels like, that we get, continue to be asked to participate in events. As you can see, we are continuing to support the Rochester Hills community, that is just one of the events, we actually participated in another event last week with the Rochester Hills community, so we continue to support that community and provide mental health resources in that community. We hosted a veterans event last Friday, very successful, in Madison Heights, had almost 100 individuals who participated in that, or came to that event, had, and heard from some really great speakers, it was a really great program. I'm going to also mention, so that was just last week, this week we have quite a few things coming up as well with the Suicide Prevention Community Forum, we work with Oakland County Health Division to host that community forum here in our building in this room, that's coming up on Thursday. And then we also participate in the, participate in Help Plan, the State Recovery Celebration, and that's going to be on Friday, the 13th, and that is going to be held on Bell Isle. Couple of other events, we have the Out of Darkness Walk, that is a suicide prevention walk that we participate in this weekend, as well as the Alliance, one of our prevention providers, it's their community picnic. Next slide, please. Also, this is a very important event, our Walk a Mile in My Shoes Rally coming up at the Capitol, and that's going to be on Tuesday, September the 17th. That is one of our biggest events of the year. We did have to kind of transfer, kind of shift gears a little bit, change that date, but we still have a great, great program coming. We have over 2,000 people come to that event, so if you're in Lansing and you're able to join us, it is a wonderful event, it's very inspirational. It's an opportunity for people to have conversations with legislators and celebrate their abilities. Walk a Mile in My Shoes Rally on September the 17th. As already, I kind of already mentioned that we are working closely with Oakland County Parks to make sure we have representation at some of their adaptability events, and they have actually quite a few of them coming up this fall. We've got an autumn one coming up, there's this Wheels and Squeals event coming up, as well as their diversibility days that we are participating, we have a table at. Megan already mentioned our recovery celebration, that is coming up on September the 20th, it's a Friday. We host that in our parking lot, it's a big celebration. She mentioned that the great presenter and entertainer that we have coming, also an opportunity to just celebrate people's recovery and celebrate them, so hope that you can join us, that would be wonderful if you could. Next is the NAMI Walk, which is coming up on the 21st, and that is going to be at University Detroit Mercy this year, last couple of years it's been actually at Wayne State, so we're trying a new location this year, looking forward to that event. In terms, there's many people that come out, it's a great walk, there's great resources, and it's just a way to recognize mental health in the community and beyond. The same day is the Autism Hero Walk, we will also be part of that program, so we're going to just divide and conquer and make sure that we're at a number of different events. Next slide, please. Okay, I wanted to mention just some things we have coming up, we'll talk a little bit more about them in the new month in October, but we, we do have, well, there's the conference coming up that we have the Amdean attending, as well as Megan had already mentioned, that we have there our SUD Community Resource Expo, that's going to be held at Oakland University, we're partnering with Oakland University to put together a great program, lots of resources, a lot of speakers, a lot of opportunities for individuals to learn about employment in the mental health field. In addition, Patrick Jones mentioned the Call to Solidarity that is coming up next month as well, and we're looking forward to our third installment of the Call to Solidarity Program, it's a great line of information, as well as just continuing that conversation that we're talking about trying to advance what we're doing in the community. Next slide. Some of the press releases that we have going out, we already did the Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month press release, and as mentioned, Bernard was on his way to accept a proclamation at the Farmington Hills City Council meeting, a few Dana and Tricia and Christine were out to the Board of Commissioners last week to receive a very nice framed, both of the proclamations signed by all the commissioners, so we are starting to receive a lot of those proclamations in, which is very inspiring, it's wonderful that the communities are taking that charge and really pushing it forward. Also wanted to mention that our own Dana Lassenview was recognized by Cranes as a black business leader, she is part of that notable group of individuals, that press release is going out momentarily, so. Obviously with Walk a Mile, we're going to highlight that, as well as our new claims director. Our advertising continues, Megan spoke a little bit about some of our SUD advertising, that's a big part of our advertising budget. We also had a few grants we did some advertising with, and then some also funds that we've been doing some general advertising. Wanted to mention, as I already mentioned, we're hosting the Suicide Prevention Community Discussion here with Oakland County Health Division, but also some of our other partners, Common Ground, Community Housing Network, and Life Skills also use our facility for some of their community outreach efforts. That I believe is all I have.
Any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate you. Yes, Malchaya.
Hello Suzanne.
Hi.
Is it possible for us to see some of the commercials that are showing on TV in a meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for bringing that back.
Okay, because I haven't seen them.
Okay.
And how was the, that reminds me, how was the veterans event? That was on the 6th?
Yeah, it was on Friday, it was great.
In Madison Heights?
Yes, we had almost 100 individuals that came, lots of great presenters, we, we had to cut off our vendor tables because we had so many, and there's only so much space at that location.
Right.
So we, we kind of had to limit it to, but we still had, I believe, around 20 vendors. So it was quite a successful event.
Well, that's good to hear, thank you.
You're welcome. I think I forgot, one more thing is we have our behavioral health and justice training coming up on Friday as well, so lots of trainings going on in the building as well.
Thank you. Sheila, did you want to give some information on the CMHA?
Yeah, so we're expecting an email any day, and as you know, we have to jump on rooms, so if anybody's interested in attending the fall conference, I need to know as soon as possible. I'm expecting that email, like, probably as we speak, so. So if anybody's interested and they want a place to sleep, I need to know.
Otherwise they're going to have to sleep in their car.
Pretty much.
That's right. It's, and it's an awesome drive going up north this time of year, so it'll, it'll be superb, you get the fall colors as a bonus, so.
This is the biggest one, too, the most fifteen, is the fall.
Okay. Last, I want to add an item on, on, and that is first, we want to welcome our newest board member, but someone who's on her second tour of duty, Sarah Guadalupe, welcome back. Well, we're glad, because now we have a full board, which we haven't had for a little while, and we're glad you are the person who's been approved by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and we look forward to you serving on the Finance Committee. So, so the record is complete, I would like to have a motion to nominate Sarah to be on the Finance Committee. We'll do it a full board, that's fine, yeah. Movement supported, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the motion carries, and we know you're going to figure out all this budget and financial stuff for us, so thank you. Okay, well, all right, well, we may, yeah. All right. Next we have a second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone online or attending?
If you are online and wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand at
There being no one, we'll go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? There being no one, we'll conclude public comment, and then we have board member comments, and we'll start with Malchaya Newman.
Thank you for all of the presentations that were done today, they were very thorough, and have a good night.
I'll echo Ms. Newman's sentiments, thank you for the presentation and answering all of the questions from the board. We don't do that just to ask questions, we really want to understand all of the processes and procedures. Thank you.
Patrick Jones?
Let me just echo, thanks a lot, I thought it was an exciting meeting today and very informative, and so thanks everyone who contributed to this, to this meeting, and also the focus that you're giving, so really appreciate so many of you, thank you very much.
Just want to thank you again for the warm welcome, and I was lucky enough to be able to come to this meeting tonight and learned a ton just to get back into the swing, I think, so thank you to all the presenters, very well done and very thoroughly, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you for the many presentations today, I just have two comments to share. The first is that I wanted to report to the board that I completed the Appeals Committee training today with Vicki Suter, so I'm all set up for that. And then the second is I just wanted to share that I had a conversation with a resident in Lake Orion yesterday, and I mentioned that I was a board member here, and I said our name, Oakland Community Health Network, and she said, oh, I think I saw like a billboard in, at Great Lakes Crossing for that, and I said, yes, there is one there, so just wanted to share that, that's great that people are seeing our, our stuff in the community. Thank you, have a good night.
Hello, I just want to echo, say ditto, thanks for all of the wonderful presentations and spreading the knowledge to us.
Yes, all the presentations were very, very good and very informative, and also thanks for answering all the questions, and thank you for the SUD report, I really appreciate that, thank you.
I'll conclude, I echo the, the thanks to our staff, and I know a lot of work of people who aren't even here goes into all these presentations, so we, we thank you. And I also want to thank the board, we had a little bit lengthier meeting than even I thought we would have, but we covered a lot of ground. I was really glad Mr. Bolter could be available, we're kind of at a critical time on some of these issues, but despite all that noise and all that clutter, we're going to keep on doing what we do every day with you and your team, and serve the communities that we need to serve here in Oakland County. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.